Good evening, everyone. I'd like to take this time to welcome everyone to this public hearing for a potential moratorium on our solar farm portion of our ordinance. I'd like to begin by asking everyone to stand and recite the pledge with us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, to the board members, and before we open the public hearing, we'll be voting on two motions to begin the hearing. Motion number one will be the time limits on speakers. My suggestion would be three to five minutes per speaker. Speaker, as many speakers can speak as they want. However, we'd like to limit it to three to five. Three to five? Is that better? Sorry. It was already echoing in my hearing aids, so I thought I was loud enough. Three to five minutes per speaker. Motion two, second, will be to open the meeting to a public hearing. And then, at the end of everyone speaking, we will entertain a motion to close the public hearing for then-board discussion. I would like to ask everyone to, I'd like for everyone to have an opportunity to speak that wants to speak, but we want to try to run this as quickly and as efficiently as we can. We're going to ask you to come down to the podium. The signature sheet is on the podium. We'd like for you to sign your name there, please. And also, I would ask all of you that would like to speak to maybe come down in the first couple of rows, so that we don't have to wait so long on people to come and go back to their seats. So, once we open the hearing, I would ask all of you that wish to speak to please move down, take time to move down. So I would entertain those motions.
Oh, roll call?
Yes.
Darren Price. Bill Free.
Here.
Dale Munson. Gary Naylor.
Present.
Robert Stewart. Brian Robb. Bill Mackey. Darrell Drew. Bill McDaniel. Jeff Wesling. And myself, Beverly Rude.
Okay. We do have a quorum, so we will, I will entertain those motions.
Gary, may I add one suggestion?
Okay.
It was discussed three to five minutes per speaker. I think if there are groups of folks that have hired counsel, I would encourage you to allow them to speak for up to 20 minutes.
Okay. Okay. We can add.
I'm not telling you how to vote, I'm just telling you that's what I would encourage.
Do we have counsel here that plan?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Motion made. And there is a second by Dale, that we allow three to five minutes for each speaker with counsel's representation giving them 20, up to 20 minutes. Is there any other discussions or questions?
Twenty minutes is a long time for a lawyer.
Maybe not long enough.
Would 10 minutes be good enough?
I'm familiar with this counsel.
Is there any other questions or discussion? All in favor of the motion as presented signify by saying aye. All opposed, the same. One nay, the rest in favor. Motion carries. So there will be three to five minutes per speaker. Anyone can speak, and everyone. I would ask you to start making your way down towards the front of the auditorium, please, if you do plan on speaking, so that we can keep it moving. And I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Motion made by Darrell, seconded by Dale to open the public hearing. Any questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, the same. Motion carries. We are speaking towards a moratorium on the solar farm portion of our solar ordinance only. That's what was advertised for. It will not, this discussion tonight will not affect the residential portion of our zoning ordinance. We would like for you to speak to the ordinance if there are changes that involve public safety, or anything else that you may feel that's part of that ordinance. We ask you to not duplicate each other. If someone has already spoken your direction, we ask that you refrain from speaking. You're welcome to speak, but we would like for you to yield the floor to someone else that hasn't mentioned something new. So, as I've said, we'd like for you to sign in. Name only, and please print, so it's legible. And, and please speak clearly into the mic, because it is being recorded, and we want to make sure that it's all legible. So, who would like to be first?
And address?
Could you please leave your addresses as well?
Good evening, thank you. And thank you for the additional time, and I actually hope that it will make it more efficient, because I imagine I'll cover some things that some other folks may have to say as well. But my name is Jason Kuchmay. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Snyder Morgan and Kuchmay. The address is 4211 Clubview Drive, Fort Wayne, Indiana. I represent Kurt Naylor and a number of other property owners in the county, and I have been asked to come here and speak on their request to impose a temporary moratorium banning the filing of commercial solar applications while you consider changes to your solar ordinance. Just by way of background, I've been heavily involved in solar issues for the past several years. I've been in counties such as Madison, Palasque, Elkhart, Noble, Howard, Porter, Delaware, Wabash, many other counties throughout the state. And the scope of my involvement has been all over the place. I've been involved in litigation involving solar issues, involved in revisions to ordinances, tax abatement proceedings, special exception proceedings, proceedings in front of the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, and just many others as well. So I've, I've seen a lot of ordinances, I've heard a lot of arguments, and I've seen what commercial solar can do to a community, not the least of which unfortunately is division among the residents, can result in the loss of jobs, the removal of many thousands of acres of productive farmland from, you know, from production. And as you will soon see, if we don't have the moratorium in place, and frankly, after you enact an ordinance down the road, or at least amend it, you're gonna, here comes phase one, here comes the company. They get their project approved, you get phase one, then you get phase two, then you get phase three, then you get the next company, followed by the next company. Palasque County, where I've been pretty heavily involved, at last count, they have had over 25,000 acres of farmland currently under contract with solar. One of these projects, as I'm sure you know, utilizes literally thousands of acres, with hundreds of thousands of giant panels, you've got the substations, the cables, the inverters, everything else that goes with it. And I've said this before to other bodies, but I want to make it clear, and just so you don't make any mistake, I mean, this is an industrial utility plant. It's not a solar farm. I know folks like to call it a farm. It's a utility plant, and it would change the face of your county long-term. So it is very important, I think, to get it right. And I would say that, you know, a moratorium is not saying no to solar. You know, what it does is it temporarily maintains the status quo. It allows time to get proper regulations in place, so it can be done right. So again, you're not saying you're no, you're saying let's do it right. Let's be responsible, let's protect the county, let's protect the residents in the county, let's protect the rights of the non-participating property owners, while also allowing for a proper development. Moratoriums, you know, frankly, they're a commonly-used tool across the state. For example, Cosiasko, Marshall, Madison, Delaware Counties, among others, they've all enacted moratoriums to provide protections while they've considered changes to their ordinances. I understand just this morning that Rush County Commissioners, they voted to recommend to the Plan Commission a moratorium on solar applications until January 1, 2025. Now, I know, here in Fayette County, I know you've got presently do have a solar ordinance in place, but my clients believe, they do believe that that could be a starting point for the discussion, but frankly, that many additional protections need to be incorporated. You know, when you have a solar utility like this, that just spans these thousands of acres, naturally, it is going to have a significant impact on neighboring properties. And your existing ordinance, I think, recognizes that, at least in the kind of the preamble portion of the, of the ordinance, where it states, "The regulation of solar energy systems is designed to protect the public health, welfare, and safety." Your ordinance also states that the intent is to minimize the adverse effects of these developments, and to avoid potential damage to adjacent properties. So the recognition, the recognition and the desire is there, but my clients submit that the existing ordinance does not adequately meet that desire. Over the last several years, I've gathered a lot of information regarding some of the downsides of these projects. You know, for example, there's, there's many studies out there that show, "Commercial solar utilities will negatively impact neighboring property values." The effect is generally seen within three miles, and closer, and obviously, the impact is greater the closer the properties are to the development, and the larger the development is. You know, I've spoken to, to many local Indiana brokers, and they confirm what, to me at least, is obvious, you know, people do not want to live near these projects. Sales have been lost, offers have not been made, people are canceling their viewings, they're refusing to even view homes, you know, for sales of homes near these projects. The market is drying up. You know, solar companies and some of the proceedings that I've been to, you know, they try to argue to the contrary. They say there is no harm, I've even heard some say that property values are going to go up. And if you find yourself in that situation, whether tonight or in some future proceeding, look carefully at what they're presenting. For example, I've seen some of their data actually include sales, where it was the solar company that purchased the neighboring property for the far higher price. You know, normal folks, they don't want to live anywhere near these. They do not want to have their homes and their properties surrounded by these. And when you put the solar utilities in an agricultural district, you're destroying the rural character, and you're taking important farmland out of operation. Adequate farmland is critical to our nation's food supply, and frankly, it's a national security interest, our food supply in this country. And solar utilities, they eat up just vast amounts of land, and that, that can't be disputed. They increase runoff, they result in soil loss, and I'm being told that it can take generations to recover the fertility on some, on this farmland, if ever. So it's not just simply the case, 20, 30 years down the road, you just pull these panels out and pretend like the project never happened. And these developments, we're finding they don't really benefit local communities, as the solar companies often suggest. You know, the electricity itself, it's, it's sold to the grid, and it's just kind of sent off to who knows where. It's not necessarily going to stay local and, and provide electricity to the homes here in the county. Solar companies, their own experts, in some of the cases that I've been involved with, their experts admit that their project is going to result in a loss of jobs in the counties where they're located. You know, once, once these solar projects are up and running, you don't even need one hand to count how many jobs, new jobs are going to be associated with that facility. You may have one, two, three people at most, right? We're going to be there keeping an eye on it, flip a switch if something goes wrong. That's, that's all they're going to quote "create." But on the other side of that equation, you know, we're taking away large amounts of farmland, we're taking that out of operation, that's going to result in significant job loss, among other problems, and those job losses are going to far exceed any jobs created. You're going to have less sales, less seed, less fuel, less labor, less taxes, all from removing this, this farmland out of production, and they're going to be significant losses to a community, and again, they're going to far outweigh any perceived benefit. And so, with all these concerns surrounding solar utilities, I just want to talk a little bit on what I see some other counties doing. You know, and one way to offer protection that I see in some counties is to limit, you know, where these can go. For example, excluding prime agricultural farmland. I've seen counties discussing putting limits on the number of acres of farmland that can ultimately be utilized in the county. Let's put, put a cap on it. While one project, you know, I see folks like, they like to come in here and say, "Well, we're only taking 1% of the farmland, or only taking 2% of the farmland." Well, again, these things add up over time. The cumulative effect is pretty darn significant, it's not just 1% of the acreage. So again, I see a lot of counties that are starting to recognize this, and they're looking at putting caps on the farmland that can be, that can be taken. Obviously, having a proper setback is very important to protect the adjacent non-participating property owners. Right now, when I looked at your ordinance this morning, it looked like you had 75 feet from the property lines, and 250 feet from residential structures. You know, I would submit that having a solar utility 250 feet away from your home does not alleviate any of the negative effects that I've mentioned, and as well as others. You know, Shelby County, I believe they have 660, 660 feet from a residential structure. Franklin County is 650 feet from a residential structure. Cosiasko County, they are one mile from a platted community. You know, certainly, you know, more can, and hopefully should be done here in Fayette County. And as I read your current ordinance, it looks like very little detail is required in order to get a special exception. Looks like most of the detail is, comes later, you know, before they're required to get a permit, a building permit. A lot of the ordinances I see, they kind of change that, right? They require a lot more as part of the special exception application. And I think that's something that my clients would like to see, and I think it's important. I think the project details should be required at the special exception stage. I mean, otherwise, you know, how is the BZA going to reasonably consider the impacts on all the neighboring properties without that? How are you going to consider appropriate conditions that would be imposed on the project without all that level of detail? So let's see that site plan as part of the application. How many panels are going to be there? Where specifically are these panels going to be situated? You know, what's your, what's your fire safety plan? You know, can the, can the equipment get inside? Does it even have room to maneuver? You know, how will the first responders be trained? Do they even have the right equipment? You know, these are things that you need to know before you even give them the special exception, not down the road, after that's already been accomplished. You know, and the special exception, that hearing is a public hearing, and I would submit that the public has a right to those project details, so they themselves can evaluate those details, respond, participate in the public hearing, address concerns that they have, and be aware how they may, or may not be affected by that particular project, which is equally as important for the BZA to have that information. So, so let's require that necessary information upfront, and let's make that information public. Decommission plans, those are obviously very important to, to counties. Chances are that the solar company that receives approval will not be the company that's operating this project 20 to 30 years down the road at the end of the project's life. And who's going to get stuck holding that bag? And I hope, for everyone's sake in this room, that it's not the county. My clients would like to see the ordinance impose reasonable restrictions on the transfer of ownership of the, of these developments. Also, you know, your ordinance currently requires a bond or financial assurance to cover the cost of decommissioning. Obviously, the number that's going to be utilized at this stage of the game would be a guess. The actual number, you know, could result, the resulting actual number could be a lot higher. The county should consider a bond, I would submit, for 150%, 200% of the cost. I've seen ordinances requiring that, as well as, you know, including adjustments derived from the U.S. Bureau of Consumer Price Indexes to protect against inflation. Again, I see that in other counties, and I would think that Fayette County wants to be sure that it is also protected. You know, I do see a somewhat similar concept later in your ordinance, where you do talk about having a fund to secure the removal of an abandoned solar utility, and that fund is required to be 125% of the cost of demolition and removal. Now, I would submit that, you know, 125% is too low, first of all, but there's also, there's no provision there in your ordinance that that fund be evaluated every couple of years, and that amount be evaluated every couple of years. So whatever, whatever number is decided at the present, that could be woefully deficient in 30 years. In fact, I mean, what would the county even do? You know, you've got an abandoned project, you know, what's, what's the county going to do with all those hundreds of thousands of panels? You know, currently, recycling these solar panels is not an option, it's cost prohibitive. Many landfills cannot accept these panels, because they're considered toxic. In 2016, the International Renewable Energy Agency estimated that there was about 250,000 metric tons of solar panel waste in the world. That number they're estimating, again, that's 250,000 metric tons, that number they're estimating by 2050 will be 78 million metric tons. That's an incredible difference, and you need to make sure that the county is not left holding the bag down the road. I've also seen many counties impose property value guarantees in their solar ordinances to protect the non-participating property owners. That's something my clients would also like to see. You know, I just mentioned briefly some of the negative impacts on property values, and there was a proceeding I had in another county, which I think just really underscores the need for a property value guarantee. In that case, we had a Board of Zoning Appeals was deliberating imposing a property value guarantee as a condition of approval for a special exception. The solar company, their representative actually interrupted the BZA during the deliberations, and threatened to sue if that condition was imposed. And, and when the BZA questioned, you know, why would that even be an issue? You know, you spent all night arguing that there's not going to be a negative effect, you know, why, why is that even an issue? Why do you care if we impose a property value guarantee? Well, the look on their faces, and the stunned silence, just told everybody what they needed to know, which was even the solar company did not believe their own rhetoric. There's just simply many concerns with these solar utilities, and, and again, some of the highlights that I've done with your existing ordinance, and it is my hope, and the hope of my clients, that tonight's conversation has demonstrated, and will demonstrate, the importance of considering some changes to your ordinance here in the county. And again, the changes don't have to be anti-solar, but they do need to protect the county, they do need to protect the non-participating property owners, and the imposition, imposition of a moratorium, as requested, will just maintain the status quo until those changes can be deliberated, those changes can be put on paper, those changes can be decided upon. I've seen other counties that I've worked with create steering committees with representatives of solar, you got representatives of the local government, you've got non-participating property owners all getting together, identifying concerns, addressing those concerns, that steering committee putting together, helping to put together a draft of the ordinance, you know, before it's presented for a public hearing. And, and, you know, we're asking for that to be considered as well. I think, let's, let's get a moratorium in place, let's get a steering committee in place, let's just hash it out, let's get a proper ordinance that protects all of the interests, in addition, you know, specifically the, the county and the non-participating property owners. So I thank you for your, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, and I'm certainly welcome to answer any questions folks may have, or I can sit down and listen to what some other folks have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we'll hold our questions till the end, if you have any specific questions. Next?
Sir?
Go ahead. Please state your name and your address.
Jim King. And I live in south of town, Wellsview. And just want to make a brief statement in opposition to your moratorium. You know, we can quote studies, everybody can come up here and quote a study. For every point of view that you've got, there's a study that'll support it, so I'm not going to quote studies. I think myself, solar panels are, there's no biohazard, there's no environmental hazard, they bring value into the county. You know, and these seems to be positive aspects. Where's our electricity come from? You know, we don't want, we don't want wind generators in Fayette County, now we don't want solar panels in Fayette County. Where are we going to get our electricity? Just, why don't you put a moratorium on electricity, and then all your problems go away? The, the thing that I see is that here's, here's an opportunity for the, the property owner themselves to decide the use of their land. If they can make money farming, they're going to make money farming. If they can make money putting solar panels up, they'll put solar panels up. Leave it up to the guy that's got the property to decide what he wants on his property. And I think, I'll, I'll stay within my three minutes here. Again, as solar panels go, there don't seem to be too many hazards with them. You look right down the road down here, and there's a whole field full of them. I don't see any people in the housing in Ranch Road or the divisions here bailing out, because they've got solar panels here. If there's a hazard, surely we don't want our children this close to that hazard. So, again, I, I just oppose a moratorium. We need to get our electricity. There was a, a article on the Weather Channel this morning. The cost of solar power versus fossil fuels is coming down. They, they said it's rapidly approaching a break-even point with fossil fuels, and it will soon be lower than fossil fuels. We all want a cheaper electric bill. Here's our chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Good evening. Short, so I'm going to bend that down. My name is Jessica McQuillan. I live on Main Street in Rushville, but I grew up in Fayette County. My family farm is in Fayette County.
Could you please repeat your last name, please?
McQuillan, M-C-Q-U-I-L-L-E-N. I just had a couple of quick counterpoints here, I'll definitely stay within my time. To Mr. King's opposition to the moratorium, I attended some meetings with a company that was interested in coming into Fayette County, one of the first projects with Hoosier Solar. They themselves said that our electricity will not be coming from their project. It will most likely be outsourced to Chicago, New York, wherever they have the biggest pull from. So I think we can pretty well refute that. I, too, am in favor of property owners' rights, and I think everyone, most people in this room are, too, but my rights and my neighbors' rights stop where the other begins. I think that's a consideration that the APC should take quite seriously. I think everyone should be able to do what they want on their property within reason, and it can't impact everyone else, especially environmentally. My main concern is the health and safety of the public. There's a reason that the landfills aren't taking these solar panels, and I personally don't want to be the neighbor to a solar industrial plant, when whatever is in them that the landfills don't want is running into my groundwater. So, I think, for that reason, the APC should consider voting for moratorium, so that we have time, the opposition has time, to do their homework and see if we need have time, the opposition has time to do their homework and see if we need to amend this ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Julie Lamberson. My address is 6080 West County Road 900 North. We're in Posey Township. I would like to start out, I think from this day forward, all of us as a group need to stop calling them solar farms. The definition of a farm is an area of land and its buildings used for growing crops and rearing animals, or by making ones living by growing crops or keeping livestock. I would challenge any of you to a raise of hands. Have any of you seen the Henry County Bellflower Solar Industrial Plant yet? Have you driven there? I've got photos. The roads are gone. It used to be asphalt. You can see some small patches of asphalt. So some questions that I think we want to take our time and plan. Number one, that's just a few miles from the northern end of Fayette County. I was able to visually observe that project. They do scrape the topsoil off. I think all of us can agree to say in 30 years that we're going to be able to just remove these panels and grow a crop? Can you tell me, if you clear 800 acres of topsoil two inches, can you tell me what topsoil will cost in 30 years? So when you have the bond set on that ground, you can't just factor in what will the solar panel removal and what will the solar panel disposal cost, but also if they take two inches of topsoil, that's all of your organic matter. To farm again, you have to put that back because you're taking it down to a hard pan or a clay layer. So I think we need to ask questions like that. Who replaces the roads? Do Fayette County taxpayers have to pay to replace all the roads? Because up around the Henry County project, I drove it all, they've destroyed more than 12 miles of county road. It went from asphalt to now powder. That means everybody in the county now gets to drive on gravel drives. So if we don't want that, I think that we can all agree, if you bought a house and you lived on a paved road, you'd like it to stay that way. It's not fair for me to have my property become a solar farm and the consequences of the construction project make it now be a gravel road infinitely. So who pays for the repaving the roads when it's done? I think those are relevant questions. And sometimes I think the moratorium gives you a little time to plan and ask these kinds of hard questions. How are we going to put topsoil back? How are we going to make it viable farm ground again 30 years from now? What do we think that topsoil will cost? Include people that know those kinds of things. Don't just take it for a, oh, it'll be farmed again. I watched that whole project be completed. As I drove down the road, I watched little kids outside playing in a yard last night, and they're not part of the solar project. Those little kids are surrounded on all four sides, 100% solar. I have photos of it. I'd be happy to print those off and email them to every one of you. And I can't imagine that the rights of the wealthy person that decided to take the solar farm, those people now are boxed in. I can't imagine you'd want to live there. So I'm challenging every one of you, before you just pass this in your county, go drive around, drive up and down every county road and see what it really looks like and what the consequences are. They've let it grow up in weeds. They don't keep it mowed. They also have huge drainage issues that have come off of the drainage from the solar panels. They've cut large ruts in the roads, and now they've cut up big things and had to add additional tile in the road. The biggest concern that I have, and I have photographs, and I can give you the pinpoint of the exact location. It's been one year for some of those solar panels. They already are fading. I can give you the exact pinpoint. There's a whole section that's faded. That's called degradation. Panels are supposed to last for 30 years. They're already degrading after one year. All science shows that if they're degrading, they use cheap solar panels. Guess what that means? Eventually, either they have to replace them and spend more money on them, or they're going to be able to devalue them or depreciate them, which means if they depreciate it, they pay less taxes. So go look at the project. These are factual things. But I challenge you to take your time and plan carefully where we put this. That's all that we're asking, is just that you take some time, which Rush County just voted to do this morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live in Rushville, farm in Rushville and in Fayette County. One of the things that obviously the growers, farmers that are here is concerned is drainage. Where these panels go, is it going to disrupt any of the mains that's draining any landowners that's next door? Are they going to fix them? So on and so forth. 30 years down the road, if there's a main that's draining your land, landowners that's next door, that have no part of this, that their sole income comes off of farming, are those guys going to be willing to remove these panels and put in a new main that needs to be able to drain the farm ground next door? I had, I don't know if it's a pleasure or not, but I had a talk with a guy in Henry County that farms in Henry County and Randolph County. This was before we got, started planting this spring. Three years ago, they farm a farm, have farmed this farm, his dad's farmed this farm. It was rented. His son has now come back to the farm and is farming with him. His dad has in turn retired. The landowner had, there was a, in Randolph County, solar group was coming in. She chose not to sign her farm up. So therefore, there blocked three sides of her place has got solar panels on it and the road she lives on. First year, couldn't farm it. Couldn't even get a crop planted in it because they hit a tile, the solar panel group did. And it says in their contracts that they are supposed to fix the tiles that they hit. They say that that, they're going to. Well, they never did fix it. Year two comes around, they finally got them there to fix it. They dug it up and it was the main that drained this farm, okay? They come right out of their mouth and said, guys, in order for us to fix this right, we're going to have to shut the whole grid down. And we can't do that. It's not, we're not going to because it's going to cost us too much money. So they put a lift pump in to try to fix it. Well, any growers here that's done any tile work knows that's, that's not going to fix the problem. So that same year, two years ago, they finally got a crop planted on it at the end of May. They had to replant it again in June. That corn that year made 110 bushel. Everything else around it that they farmed made two and a quarter. Now, I understand, we got to talk about land rights. But when you have adjoining landowners that are making a living off of that, farm that they're farming, and they don't choose to do solar, and when you start obstructing their income, that's when you got to reevaluate, reevaluate the land rights on what we're doing. So, you know, amongst your moratorium, we got to look at drainage on this stuff and put, put plans in practice to, to be able to address these situations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Kurt Naylor, 4944 West Columbia Road, Connersville, Indiana. And we've talked about property values, neighboring property values, non-participating property values, and how that's going to affect those. And so we've talked about drainage and how it could affect farmers and neighboring farmers that are non-participating in a negative way. I'm going to touch just a minute here on residential. So we actually had Jenny Harvey of VRA Integrity Real Estate come out and, and look at a couple of the homes that we're going to be setting inside of the proposed solar, solar plant outside of Glenwood. And so the first one she looked at, Dave and Debbie Burkhart, who have lived there for several, several years and taxpayers. And this home, Jenny says, please find attached a comparative market analysis for the Burkhart home with three acres. The acreage with the home has a great value in regards to country living for families. In my professional opinion, I believe if solar farms are present, this home along with the acreage would suffer in value. It was going to be surrounded on three sides of solar. That is not why they lived in the country. That's not why they, they live out where they live. And I would venture to say that that's, most of the people in the crowd here that live out in the country did not move out there to be surrounded by an industrial utility plant. No different than putting a coal plant or anything else right beside a house. You know, this is a, this is a industrial utility plant. Another one, just around the corner, from this home, this young man bought the home three years ago, and again, was going to be surrounded on three sides. Poured his life savings into this home, planned on living there forever. And then this news broke that there could be a solar plant put in around his home. On that one, Jenny Harvey says, please find attached comparative market analysis on the Boozled home. In my professional opinion, if the property is surrounded by solar farms, the property in question would suffer greatly in value. Please keep in mind, we understand and respect property rights, but it has to be for the non-participating property rights as well, not just those that have chosen to sign up. We have to do something with this ordinance to protect the non-participating residential and non-participating farmers in the community. I would urge you for the moratorium. So, thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, Brian Robb is a city council member, and they meet tonight, and he is in need to leave for that council meeting. There were some important issues that he needs to be present for tonight. So we'll be without Brian for the rest of the evening.
Good evening. Nick Thomas, owner of Falmouth Farm Supply. I own the grain elevator in Falmouth, Indiana and Glenwood, Indiana. I've got 50 employees, 35 of those employees.
A little closer to the mic, please.
35 of those employees are employed in Glenwood and in Falmouth. Got an annual payroll of about $3 million. These solar panels will end up taking ground from my business that we service and earn income on. So I earn income off of those pieces of ground from buying the grain, selling them the fertilizer, selling them the seed, the chemicals, the feed. It'll go on and on. But I touched that acre five or six times. So for every acre that gets taken away from my business, that affects my employees, my 50 employees, five or six times. I have a $6 million construction project kind of in the, on my desk, waiting to be decided upon at this moment. $6 million, I want to build grain bins in Glenwood to help better service our customer base. I have a $10 million fertilizer building expansion plan for Glenwood also. So that's $16 million that I'm considering investing in our community as a family-owned business to help, help the community. And I want to demonstrate to you the effect that Falmouth Farm Supply has. I would like to ask my customers that are here, that are grain customers, to stand Fertilizer customers, please stand up. Seed customers, please stand up. So that's the effect that Falmouth Farm Supply has on the community. All these people do business with me. So if we take acres away by not having enough setback, that setback is too close, right? 75 feet's not enough. Needs to be farther apart so that we can protect all these farmers, all these customers, and so that we can all continue to do what we want to do, to feed the world and to help, help the community. Okay? I, I think that's about all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Tom Naylor. I've lived around there for, well, I guess 82 years. And we've heard about the drainage, how it's going to hurt the farmers, but I'm going to speak for the town of Glenwood right now. If you look at these two sections that are considered going in for the solar panels, I'd estimate 75% of that water will go right down through the south side of Glenwood and then right down through the middle of Glenwood, right there along the tavern. One time, I remember, we, the ground was saturated, we had a big rain that night, and the water got over 44, got in the tavern and the house there, and everybody was calling the fire department to come pump their basements. So if we put these solar panels in, all that water coming down through there is just going to wash all of Glenwood away. Besides, I've got a bridge back there to get to one of my farms that I own behind the elevator. So I'd just like for you to consider what the people of Glenwood will go through if they have these solar panels and all that water coming off of the ground goes down through there. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'll keep this quite brief, and I don't want to make everybody mad, but I think that for quite a number of years, communities all across the country and around the world have been following a false god of so-called environmentalism. And every few decades, we come up with a new god of environmentalism. Now it's solar panels. Even with improved technology, and there is improved technology for solar panels that will not leach off quite as much effluent, we're still poisoning ourselves with this stuff. I would propose that while you're studying this, don't throw things now, study nuclear for heaven's sakes. Put one nuclear plant in, say in the north side of Connersville, and you could probably power the whole of east central Indiana, and it just sits there and runs. Thank you.
Could you give us your name, please, and, and sign?
My name's Ralph Feimlich.
Thank you, Ralph.
You bet. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just hold off on your motion.
As I was reading through that ordinance, as a neighboring, adjoining landowner to the proposed thing, one of the things I didn't see in there was a noise ordinance. So that is something I think we need to consider too as we look into this. Alongside with what everybody else said, the drainage is a big issue for me as well, and I know that was stated on, so I won't, won't speak much to that. But as an adjoining landowner, please keep in mind, you know, my property rights as well as we look into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak?
My name's Jackson Snyder, and my dad farms and my great-grandpa farmed and my great-great-grandpa farmed, and they all farmed in this county just a few miles from here. And I intend to do the same whenever I get older. And if we put all these solar panels in, that'll be less ground that's left for everybody to farm. That's all I'd like to say.
Hi, everyone. My name is Valana Orem, and I'm actually from Rush County. And I have started off talking to most of my groups by giving God the glory, by letting Him know how thankful we are to live here. We live in a very blessed, very blessed area, and I'm just thankful that we can come together and talk about things. But as a citizen of a rural community, this is something that you need to consider from all points of view. You need to make sure that you have, they've talked about the decommissioning plan, and starting at the end, you need to make sure that the land is gonna go back to the way you want it to be. You need to protect, protect what's there because it's so precious and you're not able to get it back. You need to be able to take measurements of soil samples throughout the whole project. You need to know what's there before they start so that you know what's happening during the process of building, during the process of operation, and then again at the end when they are decommissioning. Be aware of the roads, they've talked about that, but the roads, I do live up near Bellflower, and the roads are treacherous. They're just, they're impassable in the rain, and they're impassable during non-rain, too. They're just terrible. So just make sure that you have that road plan in place so that you're very clear with who's replacing and who's fixing the roads throughout every stage of the process. I also just want to say that I did start a petition against solar fields in Rush, Henry, and Fayette County, and I've currently got 305 people that have signed the petition against any solar in Fayette, Rush, and Henry County. If you would like that, I can print out the names and give that to you, but as, I want you to consider no solar. I want you to consider the moratorium, but stopping solar from coming in and taking away the ground that is so important to the farmers and the community and the living in your community, because that's really why we came here, that's why we live here, that's why we stay, really, that's why we stay. And I also want to challenge you to listen, not only to the community, but to what the solar companies are telling you, because we've, I've gone to several different talks that they've given, and they may say at the beginning, 22 people are gonna be hired by this. No, well, now, that was the beginning, now they're down to, oh, 20, 12, 8. Oh, did we really say that? Oh, we didn't really mean that. So I want you to make sure that everything you get from them is written in very clear language, because again, they've said, as they said, the solar field is gonna go through several different ownerships. If it's not in very clear and defined terms at the very beginning, it's not gonna be there at the very end, and it's not gonna be taken care of for your community. And your community does not need to have that cost of bringing that ground back. They need to be protected, and it's your responsibility to do that. So I just thank you for taking that ownership and doing that for them. Thank you.
My name is Lisa King. I live at 7967 East, 800 North Falmouth, right across the Fayette County line. This moratorium would aid both you as elected public officials or appointed public officials in the county, because the solar company wanting their application is just the very first step. From here, they go to tax abatements, and they offer you incentives to your EDC, which can go back to the county to help the county, but not necessarily the landowners at that time. They also, if solar is so great, why do they have to have the government subsidies, the tax abatements? And why can't they put them in the deserts of Nevada, Utah, where there is no farmland to be destroyed? We can't put farmland out in Arizona on the desert. And we need to consider that there's an end purpose in that they have to have our tax agreements, and they have to have the government subsidies. If they want solar in Indiana, they need to bring their dollars, put them into our community, and they need to live here with their solar and with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Howdy. Brent Gossett, 7370 South County Road 850 West. I guess my big thing is just protecting rural America. I build fence all over east central Indiana, go up, and I've been, last two years, we've been doing big developments, been doing these big 100, 200 acre, just commercial buildings, just for whatever. And, you know, if we add in all that, what's taking up all this ground among the housing development and everything, and then you throw solar in on this, what are we gonna have to eat on here in a few years? We can go without electric, we can't go without food. It's already driving the ground prices up. It's just, it's not a win. It may smell like a rose, but it probably gonna taste like something else. And it's just not fair to the rural America, we gotta protect it. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak this evening. My name is April Isaacs. I actually live in Knightstown in Henry County, near the Bellflower solar plant. I guess a couple of things that I want to share, three main things. And the first one is, is that a few weeks ago, that the APC of Rush County actually brought in Connie Manager, I think is her name. She was from the Center for Infrastructure Economic Development, and first she was pro-solar, so I was not real pleased that she was sharing her views. But what was really encouraging as she shared her views, was she said, "Stop." I don't know how many times she said it, I'm gonna guess five or six times, during the process of her sharing with the APC in Rush County, she said, "Stop. Answer the questions. Do the research. Make sure that every document that you need is precise and in order." And she didn't say, "Use documents that are used from another project and bring those in." She said, "Make sure that you are writing the ones that are specific for you." I thought that that was really important. So even though she was pro-solar, I was like, okay, I like what she said, because she said, "Stop. Do the research. Put in a moratorium." She may not have used those words, but when she's saying, "Stop," that's definitely what she meant. And she brought up things of, questions of setbacks, the trees that have to be removed for the solar panels. She talked about the wildlife that would be affected, again, the topsoil that would be affected. She talked about, "It's the land of the people, but what do the people want?" I think that that's something that really needs to be considered. Do the people of Fayette County, do the people of Rush County, do they even want solar? And you're seeing a lot of clapping, you're seeing a lot of people stand. I'm not sure that the need and the want is there right now. She talked about buffer zones. Be careful when you're setting your setbacks and you're taking up this ground. What if businesses are coming in? What if your community is going to grow? Have you looked at that? Or are these industrial solar plants gonna take over those areas where your community could grow? She also said, and I thought that this was really interesting, she said, "Who's gonna watch over all of this?" She said, "The APC and the BZA, they have to be able to enforce those ordinances." So she said, "What are the ordinances? Who will enforce them? How will they be enforced? And what is the cost to enforce them?" She said that there needs to be a fee schedule that's set up in all of those. So when you're talking about writing all of your things, and it needs to be so detailed and so precise, and you need to make sure that everything is in there exactly as you want it for your community. She said that all development agreements should be made prior to anything being done. The economic development agreement, the road use and ditch maintenance, she talked about the vegetation plan, she talked about the decommission plan, and she talked about the drainage plan. And all of those need to be in place prior to doing anything with applications for solar companies. Another thing that I would like to talk with you about this evening is, so we got involved, you'll see the green shirts in the back, we got involved because we've got another company that is planning to come in to our area west of where Bellflower is. Sneaky, underhanded, and lies. So in 2020, in 2020, they had landowners sign agreements. And they also had them to have verbal hush agreements, that they were not allowed to speak of what they were doing. If solar is so amazing, then why are we not wanting everybody on board? Because everybody would want to be on board, right? If it's so great. But so for two, over two years, we had no idea what was going on in our backyard. Family members of people that had signed their land in those agreements, they weren't even allowed to tell their own family members about these agreements. That's just one case of the sneakiness, the underhandedness, and the lies that are happening. You know, you hear, "We're gonna bring in jobs." No, they're not. They're taking jobs away. The number of jobs? Five. Five to eight. But what's interesting is, at the meeting that Hoosier Solar had in Rush County, first they professed 219 jobs. That was the number that somebody threw out. And they were talking about $109,000 average salary. Now, the last time that they spoke, it's five to eight jobs, and you're looking at minimum wage a little bit above that. Hoosier Solar also shared, when we had a meeting with, or, you know, when we had a meeting with them, they talked about the energy going to New York and to the West Coast. None of it is staying locally. What would be local would be what's on the grid for maybe one night for your community if you lost power. That's coming from somebody in another Henry County area where they do have a little solar panel set up. And I said, "What does the community, how does the community benefit?" Well, if we lost power for one night, 24 hours, we might have power. That's it. So again, you just have to be super careful with that. The last thing that I would like to share is, a gentleman from Hoosier Solar called me before our last APC meeting, about an hour, hour and a half. I'd asked for some information a week before. So two things. One, I asked about the panels, because I think the panels are important. When you're looking at some of the panels, 100% have cadmium and some other materials that are hazardous. If they weren't hazardous, we would find ways to recycle because we can recycle glass. So there's things in them that are not recyclable. So I said, "When do you find out about the panels?" "Oh, we don't find out about them," he said, "until probably six to eight months from this point." And he was thinking that things would have been approved last week or the week before at that meeting. Six to eight months. You don't even know what panels you're using prior to the start of the project. For me, that should be number one. You want to know who's making them, what are they made of, how have they been tested? Are, is there any leaks? If there's fire, are anything gonna be released into the environment? There is research that when they're put in, it has to be careful or there could be air pollutants as well. So that's one thing. If you're looking, put in that ordinance, put everything there that, let the people know prior. Nothing can be snuck in, nothing can be hidden in this whole process. Keep everybody informed all the way through. The other thing that I think is interesting is that the counties are having, I know that Franklin is, I think it's 660, I do believe that Shelby is 600, right around there, and then we know that Rush was at 30, and I think you guys are 75 from property lines, I'm not real sure, but I think that that's it. The average setback for Hoosier Solar, they quote, is 580 feet. So why are the counties thinking so small in their setbacks when these companies are saying, "No, we're using greater setbacks than that"? Protect your people, protect your non-participating landowners, protect everybody that's going to be affected around them, and just make sure that every detail you want is in there. Take the time, write them, rewrite them, and I encourage you to put a committee together of everybody, APC, BZA, your county council, your drainage board, your non-participating property owners, your property owners that have signed up their land, citizens, everybody and anybody on that committee, talk, share, listen to those concerns, address them in those ordinances, make sure the language is foolproof, and then move forward if you want. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? If not, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. I guess we got one more.
My name's Doug Bowen. I live at 9082 North County Road 550 West, Connersville. Me and my wife, we moved here four years ago. We had residence right up on 36, right up around between Modoc and Lynn. If any of you guys have actually driven that stretch of road since then, it's terrible. Look at, I mean, you've lost all your geographics of what 36 used to be. Used to drive down 36 Sunday afternoon, look at the countryside. Now all you see is wind farms, solar panels. We chose Fayette County, we chose our house because we didn't have any of that. We lived in it. We didn't want to live in it anymore. And now we moved to where we moved, and now where does solar panels stop? You give one, where's the next one? Next one end up by my house? That's not why we moved to Fayette County. Just think about that. The farmer that actually decides he wants to put solar panels on his ground and he gets that big dollar that they actually offer, what about the next guy that's next door doing this rent and the property that he just goes in and rents it for hire? Think about how it actually affects every person in Fayette County. Every person. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm from Rush County. For those of you who are Christians, the Bible says, "Love the Lord your God and love your neighbor as yourself." If you were in these folks' shoes, what would you hope they would do for you? As for leaching chemicals into the ground, we will no longer be able to use that farmground as farmground ever again. As for the chemicals, such as lead and cadmium, can cause leukemia and other cancers, we're talking about our children and adults getting cancer. My husband died five years ago of cancer. Within the first few months, our medical bills were easily three-quarter of a million dollars. After radiation, feeding tube, brain surgery, and hospice care, the total was in the multimillion-dollar Can you live with the possibility of a child or an adult going through this if solar is allowed on our farmground? And who will pay those expenses? On a different note, in the last few weeks, we've experienced some wicked storms of 80-plus mile-an-hour winds, hail, and tornadoes. I don't know about you, but I'm still cleaning up limbs and branches that got in trees. And, I mean, we got to think about, again, these tornadoes and hailstorms with all these solar panels, those shards of glass going everywhere, thinking about fires. And, I mean, if you've looked at any of these things, they have to let them burn out. They can't even stop them. They run, they run so hot. They burn so hot. And so what happens if that's close to a neighboring non-participating resident? They just have to let it burn? There are things that are more important than just money. We've got people's lives at stake here. Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain that motion to close the public hearing. Made by Darrell.
Sure.
Seconded by Darren. So motion made and seconded to close the public hearing at this time. Is there any discussions or questions? We'll take a roll call vote.
Closing the public hearing.
Darren Price? Bill Free? Gary Naylor?
Yes.
Robert Stewart? Brian Roberts absent. Bill Mackey?
Unanimous vote. The public hearing is now closed. We will open the discussion among the board if there is any...
I would like to make a motion that we put this off until February 1st, 2025, which gives us time to look at it and what surrounding counties are doing beside us.
This would be send a favorable, or send a recommendation to the commissioners to delay or put on a moratorium till...
February 1st?
February 1st, 2025. There's a motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
By doing this, does that take this back to the... By doing this, does that take this back to the APC for a... I've lost my train of thought.
This sends it to the commissioners.
Right.
For their approval.
Then it will have, if they approve it...
It's over. It's law. If the commissioners were to change it in some way, they were to change the date or anything like that, then it would come back to the...
But even though this has been publicized as a 12-month...
That's okay.
12-month moratorium.
Yeah, that's okay.
We can change it to that, and still good.
Yes. That's like any typical ordinance that we would have. There's times when we'll have an ordinance, and we'll have a public hearing, and then we might approve the ordinance, but we might change something, setback or something like that. That's okay.
No one could apply an application during this time until February.
Correct. Once it gets through the commissioners.
Right.
February 2025.
There's, I don't, I'm not sure, is it January?
February.
Is there any other discussions or questions? If none, we'll proceed to vote. The way the vote will be is yes to send a favorable recommendation to the commissioners for tomorrow's meeting. No is sending a non-favorable recommendation. We must have five votes, yes, or five votes, no. If we do not get the five votes, then it'll be a no recommendation sent to the Board of Commissioners tomorrow. So we'll take a roll call vote.
Darren Price?
Yes.
Bill Free?
Yes.
Dale Munson?
Yes.
Gary Naylor?
Yes.
Robert Stewart? Bill Mackey? Daryl Drew?
Unanimous vote. We will send a favorable recommendation for a moratorium to the Board of Commissioners. They meet tomorrow at 2:00, 2:00 PM in the courthouse. They will be voting on it. That'll be the final vote. We're just sending a recommendation to the commissioners. They are the board, the governing body that will make it into law tomorrow, or not. Is there any other comments or questions? The only thing that I would like to say as president, I appreciate the comments. I appreciate the concerns. We might have been able to avoid this, though. Had all of you been here a year ago when we were trying to write this ordinance and try to put it together, we spent a lot of hours, man-hours, behind the scenes trying to put...
Did we even know about it?
I'm sorry?
Did we even know about it a year ago?
It's all in the public announcements.
Public announcements where?
Newspaper, for one thing. Well, I, you can watch TV. It's on TV.
Channel 3.
Channel 3, YouTube.
We don't need YouTube.
You get YouTube.
Hey, folks, I apologize. We're not going to do this, okay? Public hearing portion's over.
But we worked very hard to try to come up with an ordinance that I, I knew it wasn't close enough. There were some of us that knew it wasn't close enough, but it was the best we could get at the time. We tried to get out in front of it, and we're trying to stay out in front of it. I'm a proponent of agriculture. I want to save agriculture as it is, and I've worked hard to save agriculture. And I'll continue to work hard. And this board, for the most part, will do the same. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Darrell and seconded by Darren. Any questions? All in favor? All opposed, the same? Motion carries, meaning adjourned. Thank you, everybody.